I will start the regular meeting for Tuesday, November 12th. Stand for the pledge.
The pledge is to pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sounds like we're getting a little bit of an echo. Need a motion in a sec. Wow. Motion, a second for the agenda?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero. Consent, I need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Discussion. Go ahead, F.T.
I don't have anything to add.
Are you serious?
Yes.
Cool. That must mean everything's in order. Anybody else?
If there isn't, I didn't find it.
I've got nothing.
All right. Okay, we got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, all those opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero for consent. Open forum. We have anybody here for, come on forward. Limited to three minutes for non-agenda items. State your name and address. No council action will be taken, and items will be referred back to staff.
Marsha Grover, 11320 Fernbrook Lane, over by Dean's Manor. So, I'm here to remind you guys again that Tom Dean's DCM development does not need another gas station, convenience store, and they don't need to build it right next to all the houses that have wells there. And remember, there are already four, soon to be five, gas stations within a five-mile radius of this location. Four of them sell groceries. There's one by the elementary school, one by Target, one by the trailer park, one on 113th, that's Kish's, they're just a gas station, they do not sell groceries there, and the soon-to-be one over on 94. A person's car doesn't even get warmed up before you get there. When you, why would you think that the south end of town needs six gas stations and the north, north end of town doesn't even have one? This, if the city needs a gas station, convenience store anywhere, it's on the north end of town, by the old village. All they have in the old village is a bar and a liquor store. They can't get their groceries there, I suppose they could get takeout food, but that's where one needs to be planned. And according to the poll you paid for, a significant number of residents don't even go up to the north end of town. They don't even go to the heritage days, so there, there's just nothing there. They need some help up there. And Mr. Dean talked about putting a daycare center in there, but kitty corner across the street, there's already a daycare center. It's at the church, and they're always advertising that they have positions open for, for student enrollment. Also, I've talked to the Pollution Control Agency and the State Board of Health, they've advised me that there are very stringent rules regarding building and operating a gas station next to a private well. If you think five gas stations is just not enough for the city, and that we just have to have one more down there in the south end of town, then you need to make sure that those rules are followed stringently. And by the way, ever since that housing development went in south of Dean's Manor, and now they're working north of Dean's Manor, our neighborhood has had terrible water problems all summer long during the drought. We've had water problems in our neighborhood. So I think you need to look into that before you let them start building house, houses and gas stations and daycare centers and whatever else. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Grover, 11320 Fernbrook Lane. I'm not going to go through the same things my wife did, but I want to echo everything she just told you. I feel the exact same way. The, one other issue I want to bring up is the runoff water that comes from the addition that we've already primarily almost all built out, the one that's the southwest of the Manor, south of 113th. The water from, the runoff water, stormwater, from that area, I believe is all supposed to go into the two holding ponds that they have behind Dean's Country Manor. And then it goes across underneath 121 or Fernbrook Lane, runs along Fernbrook up to 112th, then goes east along 112th for a couple hundred feet, and then it goes under 112th north, and then it runs along 112th again, going east, and then it goes across private property, which would be Hillary McNally's property. That water runoff there, out of that field, has always been, or there's always been some. If you had heavy rains out there that didn't soak into the, the beans or the corns or whatever was out there, some water did come across there in heavy rains. But when the rains weren't coming, there was no water that came across there, it stopped. This year, during the drought years, or drought months, that water never stopped running through that ditch. And there's something different there, and there's way more water coming off from that property now than what there did, what there was when it was agricultural. Either we didn't do the holding ponds right, or my total understanding of that whole system is wrong, but it's way different than what it used to be. We were able to get the county to come out and clean the ditch along 121 over to 112th. We thought that's what they were all going to do, but when we were talking to them, they decided that they were going to clean along 112th too, all the way over to our culvert in Dayton. So they cleaned, well, using county money, I'm not sure if, if their bosses know they did that or not, but they cleaned all the way up to our culvert that goes under 112th and goes north. So they saved Dayton a whole bunch of money by cleaning that ditch out. I think Dayton needs to clean the ditch out that runs on the other side, because that's the bottleneck of the water. If you go down there now, it's still running, although it's rained a little bit lately, but it's never quit. It runs down, and then it's got a bottleneck where it goes under our culvert, under 112th. It need the ditch along 112th on the north side, which is Dayton's right-of-way. That ditch needs to be cleaned out, at least over to the point where it runs north across private property, and then I don't know, I guess it'd be the private landowners' nickel to clean it out on his property. But the least we could do is clean out Dayton's ditch, being as the county did two-thirds, but we should be able to do the other third. That's all I have. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
We'll give it to you when I have time.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Because I have to have it.
No problem.
Kathy Powers, 11461 Fernbrook Lane. And I'm, I'm not going to say the same things that the Grovers did, because I've said it before, and it's on record, and so I think we've made our point there. The other thing, the first thing I want to talk about is when I was at the Planning Commission, the last Planning Commission, I think we all kind of agreed that we need to have an overall good transportation plan, meaning good roads to get in and out of, you know, where the, get it in and out of Dayton, or to get in and out of the new developments and that type of thing. And I, based on what I heard, I don't think we have a overall good plan for that, so, and I think the Planning Commission realized that, and they were going to maybe perhaps do something, and Dennis, you can say something about that if you want. The other thing I just want to know with the DCM project, when is the final plan going to come to surface? Because I keep looking, and I don't see anything, and I thought we were, already did two concept plans, and I thought that that would be, the next step would be the final plan, or maybe I've got-
Next step's preliminary, but we, we don't know. I don't.
We don't have anything yet.
Probably February.
February?
Probably.
That's the best guess right now.
Because I've been told that there's going to be machinery there in March, out digging in the fields in March. So that's why I was wondering, when is this last final plan going to come to fruition? Because I think we still haven't seen the final. And the other thing I have with the, the DCM project, there, you know, it's always been under agricultural, and I've tried to look this up under, on the internet, but I was not successful. When that changed, I don't know when that zoning changed, and did, do we as residents get a vote in this? When they go from agricultural to residential and then commercial? Do we get a vote in this? Or is this just behind the scenes and?
It's the, it comes to the council. It'll be done as part of the preliminary plat to rezone it. It'll get a rezoning request.
So it's not rezoned yet?
No.
Okay, so, okay, so-
That's just, that's how it normally does.
-the portion that is residential, because I thought it was all agricultural.
It probably is.
It is today.
Okay, and so, and you know, there's a part there that they want to have commercial, and I'm totally against that. And I understand, and I've talked to some of the residents in Dayton, specifically in the Sundance area, and they would, they don't want this gas station, okay? But what they want is a convenience store. But they want the convenience store closer to them, maybe closer to Sundance. So I think people ought to be thinking about not necessarily having that commercial part that everybody talks about there. Maybe it should be someplace else. And I think that's all I have today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Go ahead.
Come on up.
Hi. Lee Holquist, 11471 Fernbrook Lane, and my property is right adjacent to the DCM project. I guess first complaint is, or comment is drainage. I don't see anything being done for drainage so far, except one of the planning committee, commission members said he, we can put in a holding pond and hope that's where the water goes, and hope isn't exactly how I want to be running my sump system. So, so I, I hope you guys have a plan, serious plan for drainage, rather than just, because all, all of my property is downhill from every bit of that property, it's lower in elevation, so. I hope you address the traffic and infrastructure, because it took me a couple minutes to get out of my driveway. It's kind of weird. Took me a couple minutes to get out of my driveway this morning, and, and it has a couple times this week, just to go walking down to Elm Creek, and there's no way to walk to Elm Creek without taking a life in your hands. Concerned about the noise, especially concerned about the noise, because it looks like they can work ten, and they'll be working 75 feet or less from my back door, and from my front door, in fact, for that matter. They can start at like, what, seven, 7:00 AM to 8:00 o'clock at night? Is that what it is?
Seven to seven.
Okay, so they can work 12 hours a day, and only 10 hours on weekends? Is that it?
Nine to-
Eight to four.
Eight to four on weekends.
Oh, so only eight hours on weekends?
That's correct.
Right. And, you know, I kind of like to use my backyard during those hours, so I think it'd be nice if I could do that too, but, you know, I understand they have things to do, but there's, there seems to be no schedule for this. It's just whenever they feel like running equipment there for whatever need is, they'll just be running equipment, and I am the one that has to deal with it. Which brings me to the other side, is the cost of this thing. What is this project going to cost the residents that are already here? You know, you guys are just going to say, we're, we're going to assess you, and you're going to pay the developer to run the sewer line up to your house. We're going to run an assessment in, we're going to buy, what is it, a water shut-off valve? And that's, all of this is before we even hooked water across my property line. So I, I, it just doesn't seem fair. I think the city should be paying that. You guys are forcing me to spend that much money that's not even touching my property. So I think the city could make some concessions on how you're spending my money. I think that's all I really want to say right now, but I really wish the council and the planning commission would consider the residents that already live here, instead of just, you know, I mean, the reality is the developer doesn't live here, so, anyway. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Jason, they're not going to be required to hook up, I don't think that's-
They're not required to pay for it. I still get an assessment for it, correct?
I don't think so.
Well, the-
I don't know, the, the city doesn't have any plans to assess for it, but I don't know what the negotiations with the developer are.
The developer said he's not paying for it. So, so anyway, it looks like I have to pay at least for, up to the shut-off bill for water. We have to pay the, the developer to run the sewer line, correct? That's how I understand it.
I don't think you'll get hooked for any of it. I don't think so.
If he hooks up.
If he, yeah, so- I want to, I want to make sure it's clear, so the developer, yeah, so the developer is not planning on running anything currently with, with the development. If the individuals on Fernbrook want that service, that's when they would be assessed.
Anyway, we're going to have to pay for it, because you're not going to be able to sell your house without it, correct?
Nope, you could sell a house without, couldn't you?
You can sell it.
Yep.
No, I want to make a certification on that, because I thought-
Well, come on up, come on up for the mic.
From Fernbrook. I just want to make a little clarification on that, because we've met a couple times about this, and I think Dean is going to put in the water piece of it, I mean, you know, that trench that goes in. But he's not going to pay for the sewer line, and that's where the six residents were going to have to cough up the money to pay for that sewer line. And that was either all in or all out.
So it's, he's not going to pull either one of them unless all six residents want that, water or sewer?
But the, what we're going to have to pay for is the sewer, not the water.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, the developer, again, conversation is now with the developer so far, doesn't mean that they won't change, but-
Right.
Currently, the developer says, is planning on not extending services currently to those six homes.
Correct.
Unless the six homes want it, then he will use his cost to then put it in, but then the residents would have to split that cost six ways to put that water to it.
That's if they want it.
That's if they want it. They are not, they are not required to.
Right.
Oh, that's correct.
Yeah. Except, I mean, we all have to split the cost of it, it can't be five of us splitting the cost, and the six get it for free.
Correct.
So it's either all six or not at all.
Yeah, you could pull it individually, but then you're going to do it later on down the road, not currently. So, well, the reason that we're, the developers looking at doing this is because economies of scale is easier to do it for six people and then spread out the cost versus doing it for each individual person, because, say, an individual in the middle wants it, and first person doesn't want it, then the water line can't go through their house, or through their lawn, unless they have, you know, rights to the other property, if that makes sense.
You know, I'm not an engineer or anything, but it seems to me that you would have to put that water and sewer to get from point A to point B to point C and so on, so even putting it in the back of us, you're going to have to do that anyway. So, I mean, I just don't understand how Dean can specifically say, we six residents have to pay for that, because I think he's going to have to do that anyway, if he's going to want to develop.
Well, the pipe will be close to your, close to your property. And if you want to hook up to it from there, then it's on you. If you don't want to hook up-
Well, the hookup, I know it's on you. It's not a hookup I'm talking about.
So, part of the development, there's a row of houses behind the homes that are on Fernbrook, really.
Yep.
And so another side of that is a road. Those utilities will run through that road-
That side, yeah.
On that side of the homes. So there will be no utility accessible for the individual, six individual homes on Fernbrook, because it'll be on the opposite side of those other homes.
They would need a designated line.
So they need a separate line to get to there, because there's no reason for that line to be put in.
But if they don't want it, then it's not going to be there.
That is correct.
That's correct.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yep, that is correct.
But what I'm trying to get at is, if an engineer looked at the big picture, he should look at all lines, and he should make it for all of us in the city that are there today. And I believe Dean should pay for it. That's my opinion.
All right, thank you. Anybod, okay.
I forgot to mention one thing about this gas station convenience store thing. It's being built right next to a big holding pond, which right now I do not have a lot of faith in those holding ponds, because we are inundated with water from holding ponds. Every time it rains, every time it snows, anytime there's any precipitation, everything from that parking lot from that is going to end up getting washed into this holding pond. The pollutants, the garbage, everything. So my question is, what happens to these pollutants after they get washed into the holding pond?
First, first off, which, Marsha, what you got to understand is, is the so-called gas station you keep talking about? It's not there, it's just an idea.
I know, it's going to, but that's, that's why I'm, I'm bringing up all these things now, because it's not a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Anybody got mine?
So if you wanted to speak in a forum, you can use the raise your hand option. I've not seen anyone.
Okay. Staff, consult, consult, Zach?
Good evening, mayor, members of council. I don't have any updates for you tonight, so thank you very much.
Amy?
I've got nothing tonight.
Marty?
I have a couple on the well for rehab. The mobilization has been delayed by Trout for a week. They were meant to be in on the 11th, they're now going to be there on the 19th. They had an equipment failure on one of their other jobs, sort of piece of equipment they need. The parts are going to be with them tomorrow, and it's going to take them a couple of days to get it installed, so it's going to delay a week. Currently, we're pumping 250,000 gallons a day, which is, you know, way down from the million plus that we were pumping a day with irrigation, so.
Are we even running well two?
Yeah, we're just running well two.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, it does say in well that we have a-
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Yeah, so-
We have the other one on.
It's not, it's not the most comfortable situation, but-
Yeah.
We are, you know, hopefully we can get this done fairly quickly.
And when Trout gets in there, they, they, the rehab is going to take, how long?
They are scheduled for two months to be in there. I think that's a little on the excessive side, but it's better to be planning for that than, you know, than plan less.
Let's say well two fails, is Champlin, at this point, can they support us?
I think, well, Champlin will support us. I think without the irrigation, that's going to make a huge difference, because with the irrigation, they were only able to support us. So we're 35 homes, I believe, in the past. In the past, we have run their system to supply ours successfully, but I'm not 100% sure how much that is with the development that's occurred in that, in the interim time there. So hopefully, I will, I can talk with Champlin to see what their production rate is, but I would imagine-
What they can spare, yeah.
Yeah.
I just- Do we expect the pump back around that, in that same timeframe?
Yeah, the pump is ready to go back in.
Okay.
So if, that's another Plan B there, if we need to put it back in, we can get it back in pretty quick. So that's already sitting on the shelf, ready to come out. I would rather not do that, but if we get to that situation, that is an option.
Right. Okay.
The old public workshop cleanup, that's going to be starting on the 19th, with the hazardous material packed and removed, the residual fuel and oils removed from the diesel fuel tank and waste oil tank. The following week tentatively is scheduled for the fuel tank removal and the waste oil tank removal. So hopefully by the end of November, that should all be cleaned up. I want to talk a little bit about a couple of items of equipment that we got in the CIP for purchase for next year. I'd like to try and order them this year to get an invoice in January. We wouldn't be actually purchasing it, we'd just be placing the order, the reason being that there's a, a strong likelihood that there's going to be a 5% increase on those equipment costs at the start of the new year. So the cat loader was one of the piece of equipment, and the Toro groundsman mower was the other piece of equipment. So I'd like to get those ordered up and ahead of time.
I think we're talking about the long-term plan.
Yeah, we are, we are talking about-
See what survives.
So-
I do have a bullet point on that, on my notes, but-
We have, we have reduced the cost on that loader significantly, down to, you know, a saving of $66,000 on that, and then the Toro is down by $20,000 as well, so we did, did save a bunch of money on those. But if you want, you know, talk, talk about that later, that's fine. And that's all I have.
Chief?
No report for me.
Chief? And John?
No.
Jason? Scott?
Good. Good. I got my piece later.
I'm good?
I'm good.
Sweet. All right. All right, item J.
So we have resolution 6224, the numbers stay the same, so there is no changes to report, and that's just accepting the-
Need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion in a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero. Item K.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Third quarter report for you. If you have any questions, please stop me as we go through. I'd like to address them beforehand. So, want to talk about general fund cash balances? We look at this graph every single time, every single quarterly report. Nothing abnormal or, or unnormal for, on the last two years. I know that it does show negative the second quarter, I did mention that at the last quarter report, but I want to make sure that's noted because of the fact that we have increased amount of expenditures, didn't start off with a full 40% fund balance at the end of the year, we ended up having to go negative in that fund temporarily. We got our first half tax settlement in July, and as you can see, this, this steepness of that graph is not the same as it was in the first half, and that's because we got the actual funding for the operations, so it's anticipated that it goes down about that rate. And then again, in December, we'll have the final second half taxes that come in, so overall, exactly as we had expected. The other two years that you would have saw, which is '21 and '22 on this graph, had some abnormal activity that you typically wouldn't see, and the reason for that is based on building permit activity in those years. So those numbers were kind of artificially inflated, not because of the fact that we didn't get the money in, but because of the building permits, we're keeping up the typical operations, whereas these last two years, we've had almost exactly 200 building permits, which is what we're budgeting for every year, so. Any questions on the general cash fund balance? I know you've seen it over time, so it's not like it's a huge change, but. None. Income statement, nothing really crazy to show here. We'll talk about the taxes again, that's 1.3 million under, and the reason for that is because we don't get those second half taxes until December. I don't anticipate any major changes from those taxes that come in, so the only major changes that we do see are maybe delinquents, so somebody doesn't pay their utility, or their tax bill, but typically those aren't as common as they were back in COVID times a couple of years ago. Multiple line items over budget, mostly based on development and fees paid. Fines and forfeitures are way down, and that's based on court fees. Number four, we received a roadway access, so Maple Grove and Dayton have a JPA for the neighborhood attached to Sundance Woods on the south side of town, it's on the north side of Maple Grove, in order to provide public works, essentially services there, and they pay us yearly for that, but they do pay us a one-time fee when they hook up new houses, and that fee goes to pay for any new equipment or anything else that's needed in the, in the area for just general fund operations of public works. So that is the payment we got from Maple Grove this year, and that is the extension of that development on the north side, in that Pulte, new, new Pulte development that you see. in that Pulte, new, new Pulte development that you see. Um, so that extended actually into Sundance Greens. So that's what the payment's for. Number five, we paid a bill for the entire year. Obviously, that's, we're going to be $861 over budget. I don't even, I think it's based on the number of calls or something that they get. So they charge us like a dollar per call or something. I don't know. It's, nevertheless, it's close. Six and seven, that's based on, on just activity we've seen. We've seen a lot of engineering preliminary projects this year. So a lot of people calling in, hey, what do we do with this? What do we do with that? Have to have engineering look at it based on water sewer capacity. So that's like development looks come in or they want to come in. I'll use the cubes as an example. We have to say, okay, how much water can they supply? How much sewer can they, can they supply? And that takes time from engineering and that can't be put back to a project because the project never comes to fruition. So those costs just get absorbed into the general fund. There's also other projects we have. We have a ton of other projects related to road products that we did this year, parking lot. All of those costs go into that engineering as well, just for the general time. Number seven, we've had a lot more code enforcement complaints this year, most certainly. And so that's spent a lot more legal time, legal consultation time. So good or bad, that is what it is. And then number eight, the fire suppression, as you can see, that's significantly under budget, which is a good job by the chief, but also the fact that we budgeted for higher wages based on the fact that we thought we could use those state aid dollars to pay for wages. We weren't able to do that per the state. They wouldn't release us the fire state aid. So the actual number that we have for expenditures is $100,000 higher than what you see there. And the reason for that is because that's where we got in for fire state aid. So that has to be cut to the fire relief based on their pension. So it's still under budget, but it should be a little closer than what it shows right now. Overall, the, you know, if you look at just in general fund variances or actual through $994,000 quote unquote under, you know, we have, expenses are higher than revenues is actually a really good spot to be at for this time of the year, being that we will see roughly a two to two and a half million dollar check from the taxes in December. So with three more months left, it's actually a really good spot to be at. Any questions on the general fund overall? This is the main operations fund, so lots of ins and outs.
What was the increase for number seven?
Um, that's based on code enforcement complaints.
Did I mean, how much was it?
Oh, it's $26,000 over budget.
Okay.
So it's over budget for the year. Um, I will say that there was much more code enforcement complaints over the summer months, when people were out and about.
What was the bulk of that?
What is the bulk of that?
Yeah, the code enforcement issues. And don't tell me long grass.
No. Can be anything, but a lot of them are what?
Long grass.
Park trailers, yeah, park trailers on grass, not right accesses.
Okay, so scattered.
Most of it's public nuisance, like visual public nuisances. People don't like the way property looks or whatever else. Those are public, those are technically a code enforcement issue. I don't know. Most of them Hayden dealt with, most of them, so.
You mean, we'll get a complaint, go investigate and find out.
Correct. Yeah, and sometimes they come up to, we have to go through legal or something to ask a question like, Kate, should we enforce this? Should we not? No, as in not, it should enforce it, but is there any legal things we need to worry about here? Is there any concerns that we have with this? We've also used legal for a lot more. So they wrote our new DA, so we have a new DA template this year that we've never had before. We actually had review of legal on a lot of the agreements we put together this year, which we didn't typically have in the past. Staff was putting those together, which probably wasn't the best option, but we've used a lot more legal consultation this year and that's, hopefully we'll save the city long-term with a lot of things.
Do we see that continuing?
Not the heavy stuff, no.
How we budgeted for 25?
We budgeted for a higher number in 25, just based on what we see for development agreements that will come in. As expected, just because of, you know, the economy or landowners or whatever, we anticipate them to be more development agreements, but nothing of this nature that will be one-time huge costs.
Also, we're, we'll continue to be, well, under budget. It's not big dollars, I guess, but in fines and forfeitures.
Yep.
Which I think is traffic enforcement.
Correct. Well, not all, but.
Are we, do we have the patrol officer online now that is dedicated to that?
Not yet. And it's based on an absence in the police department from a military leave.
Yeah, we have one on military leave and then we have two, we had two on FTO and one didn't make it. So we're just, we're still one short.
So this will probably not correct itself by the end of the year.
It will not. Having, having new officers is good. You get the longevity and they get new blood in here, but they also don't. Their FTO program for six months, so they basically shadow with somebody for six months. That just ties up two officers essentially every single time you have them out. Again, good training, but just one of the downsides of it. Any other questions? So overall, we're, we're trending really well. Interest has been really good for us, which is good and planning on investing that longer term as well. And state aids have come in higher than we anticipated as well, which is, which is great. Police state aid, fire state aid, municipal state aid for roadway maintenance and public works is all those all come in over budget, which is $8 we can utilize for operations. So that's $185,000 over budget through the year. Any other questions? Okay, overall, we're in good shape. So that's good to go, or good to know. Cash balances by fund, nothing major to report here. We had some purchases out of some new funds, which is the fire and police, public safety aid. Number four is related to the TIF fund. That, that'll come back this year in 2025, I should say. Not a whole lot of differences to discuss. I mean, stormwater fund is below, but that's based on op, you know, based on operations and we also cover that bond, which everyone knows about. First 75 homes, connection fees go to pay for the bond instead of the tax levy. So that's why major change happened is stormwater. Nothing really crazy or anything really dramatic, but I'm here to stand for questions if we have any.
Any?
I'm glad you fixed your column heading.
Thanks.
It's in the right gear.
Thanks. Some formula messed up. I put it in Excel, so I don't know. You catch one every time. I promise it'll happen, which is fine. Water sales, all right, water sales, water expenditures, water fund overall, everything seems very healthy in this fund. Have a little higher on professional services. We've had to use a little more engineering this year on, on water fund stuff and also water projects. And then repair and maintenance is much higher. That's based on some of the pump stuff we've had to do, but any major changes or anything else that we have, any questions on overall in the water fund? Overall, the water fund is trending in the right direction. We're covering, covering some depreciation with sales. You will see two more billing cycles the next time you see this graph or the next time you see this fund. So think about it right now, we're typically do six a year. We've gotten four through this billing cycle and we'll have two more after this billing cycle in order to finish out the year. Which one just happened recently, as in today, but it didn't happen in Q3 and then one will happen in January 1 or January 5 or whatever, somewhere in that time. Any questions overall with the water fund? We did get in that, the big change you'll see is the dollars in the miscellaneous fund that is related to the stated grant. We got 1.75 million that we got in from the state aid related to the wellhead treatment plan.
Okay.
That's what the big change is there.
Speaking of which.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, is, is there any changes on that?
Oh, we are just in the waiting period, whoever.
For.
Yep. Um, American conservation, American culture of historical preservation or something like that. I don't remember exact terms. ACHP is what they call it. Um, waiting for that and finalize and those things. We have an email from HUD as of today, which said submit all your stuff so we can start reviewing it. So hopefully they can review at the same time.
Yeah.
ACHP is trying to double up as much as we can and get that project back up and rolling. But essentially, we have all the rubber stamps. Just try to get them all finalized and put them on the papers.
And we're still within that 15-day period that they're supposed to have?
It's 30 days. I was misspoken. It's 15 days for that. Say they accepted it now 30 days to review it. I'll fight on days.
45 days, otherwise.
Yeah. That's ridiculous.
And our, our contract place is ready to step in or are they still working on there? Okay.
Yeah, we've had conversations with them. We haven't provided a deadline or a date because we don't know when that will be, but they are ready to go whenever we're ready to go and I'm hoping that it's sooner rather than later.
Yep.
Sewer, overall, again, fairly healthy. Nothing major to change here. Miscellaneous, we got some, I don't remember what those miscellaneous dollars were that came in. I don't even remember what they are. Probably related to development or something like that. But nothing major except $71,000 isn't huge in a, you know, 1.4 million dollar budget, but it is something. Overall, like I said, the main thing is that we're covering depreciation with sales and then also if we have any additional dollars that come in for connection fees, we're covering those as well. The depreciation went up significantly again. This is all related to those new assets that we got from developers that we didn't add before. So I'm not overall too concerned about the sewer fund and the reason being is we don't have any treatment. So the, the main costs that come from sewer funds is treatment costs. We don't have that. We have to pay my council, don't get me wrong, but there's no any typical major surprises that happen. It could be a pump or a lift station goes down or something, but nothing dramatic.
Just want to say everything that's tied to, like a lift station comes from here as well.
Yep, correct. That's correct. But they're typically not huge, you know, in my feed. I don't even know what a pump is, 50 grand or something, which in the grand scheme of things is pretty minimal.
Yeah.
So. Any major comments on sewer fund? Overall, pretty unexciting, which is probably the best kind of report to get. It's clearly unexciting. So we have Q3. Again, everything looks good to go. Q4, department heads and myself are always talking about where we're at the budget-wise and trying to keep all, as much as we can at budget or below, is based on what we saw last year. We don't want to repeat last year.
And everything is looking.
Everything looks really well.
Okay.
Everything's trending in the right direction. Overall, I can't really control the revenues and where those come from, but I can, we can control the expenditures as much as we possibly can. Some of them are going to be baked in no matter what, salaries and insurance and everything else, but those one-off things, we try to limit this year. So far, we've done pretty good.
All right.
Any questions? Okay, I don't need any action or anything. I just need basically the presentation is your acceptance. Thank you very much.
Item L, long-term plan.
Long-term plan discussion. I don't have a whole lot. I don't have actually anything on the PowerPoint because I provided you guys the new updated long-term plan based on conversations that happened at the last council meeting. No major changes in any of the funds. Only ones that had a major change was those City Hall and Fire Station getting pushed from 2028 to 2031. Again, we're, it's in the long-term plan, so it got pushed out a few more years. Talk about it later on, but if you guys want to talk about anything else, if you have questions and comments, again, I want to make sure that this long-term plan is good to go and wrapped up. Um, we'll have our final budget discussion at the next council meeting and the reason for that is to, again, separate those two things because they are related, but they're not the same exact thing. And by splitting those up, it's easier for me to handle questions and answers and whatever else is best that can. Well, staff and I are ready for questions if you have any. Again, start at whatever fund you want to. If it was 401, it's back.
You're chomping at the bit.
Yeah.
I might as well fire out there. I've got all kinds of questions here.
I would just caveat, one more thing you just talked, make sure you mention a fund or whatever fund you're talking about.
Oh, God, I've, I've got the expense. I guess I didn't write down.
That's fine.
I only wrote one fund down.
Okay, can't wait.
Um, Marty, in, in your comment about the equipment that you want to purchase, correct me if I'm wrong, Zach. When the 16% was approved, I thought we were talking about 460K for those items that you were looking at. And those items are the mower, loader, truck and stump grinder. And I thought we were talking about 460K there, but if you look at the plan, it's 562. So I don't know if we changed those numbers or if we haven't done anything about it, but those, uh, one, two, three, those four items are 562 grand on the sheet. So what have we done different as far as you're saying that you're saving 35,000 on the loader? It's still 330,000 bucks.
Yeah.
Is it cheaper than that?
Is it, sorry?
Is it cheaper than the 330,000 you got listed?
No, that 330,000 is the price that we came, well, 333, was the price that we came up with the full spec. We changed some of the things out of there to take it down from the 400, I believe it was 450 originally on there with the snow blower. We took the snow blower out of that. Um, we've re-spec some of the equipment down to 333,000. That is the bottom line price. We can go to a loader smaller than that because it wouldn't have the snow plowing capacity that we need for the streets that we're doing with that. So that is the lowest price that I can get a piece of equipment that is going to function for our purpose.
And we're looking at a brand-new one. We're not looking at.
Correct. We looked at some of the used ones and because we get such a discount for buying new, you're already, you know, 25% below the retail price. So you're buying something that's four years old for the same price that we can get today. And quite often, they're not spec the right way for snow plowing because a lot of these go to dirt movers and contractors are only using them for that purpose. So we would have to respec them and buy a plow and stuff like that for it as well. And the snow tires and all that kind of stuff to get it to the spec that we need. So we did look, do a lot of looking around on those, those vehicles, but it really is a difficult thing to find one of those out there that is low mileage that will do the, the thing that we need it to do.
I guess my point is I think we're at 460 is what we were, is what we budgeted, isn't that 16%? But we're spending 562, so the numbers don't jive.
Yeah, I think, I think what happened is we changed some dollars around between which departments were spending them. I don't remember what the other departments were at. All I remember is that we brought the total costs down. We said, okay, if we add up this one, this one and this one and all of them together, here's what we get, which I think was like 950 or something and we came as close as we could. I, I'm pretty sure that was, I don't, you'll have to go back because I don't remember the conversation, but, and I could be totally wrong here, but I'm pretty sure it was add up all the numbers, get a number. And then in that sixth, in that, and then I remember in the 16%, we added $180,000 of additional dollars just in case to be able to pull back if needed. That was with the, with the 16% included.
I don't have a problem with the mower. I mean, I can see the, they need, the loader is the only one and only mainly because I, I had given you two used ones that had like 140 hours on them and they were 230, 100,000 cheaper than the third.
By the time.
But they may not have the right tires or whatever. I mean, I don't know none of that. I'm just.
Yeah. That, that's the problem with buying the used stuff.
Yep. You got to pick what's on it.
Yeah. And then you got to repurpose it to your needs.
Uh, if we go to the Stevens, then I'm only mainly, mainly I'm focusing on 25 and 26.
Yep.
That's kind of what I'm looking at.
Yep.
Because everything else is, it's immaterial.
It's, it can flow so much.
Except one item that I chuckled about today that I found on here.
Well, it hasn't been on here the whole time, so I'll make sure nothing, nothing changed.
I think it's funnier than ever, but whatever.
Sure.
In Stevens Park, 2025, we're looking at 750. And what are we getting for that?
So since we are retooling from 2024 to be doing the production in 2025, I think that that money will move over to the master plan and once we got that figured out, what the new stuff is going to be. So what we're going to expend in 2025, I believe, Zach, is what we were supposed to spend in 2024.
Yep, yep, yep. No, I understand that.
So we haven't really identified what the, those numbers are in for 2026, I, I believe, or 2025. I believe that is just a placeholder at this time.
750,000 is the placeholder, but so far what's been discussed and can be amended, but has been discussed is, I think it's the park pavilion, additional parking as a possibility, additional trail work, some benches, I believe. There was an amphitheater expansion.
Yep.
And I feel like there's one more thing I'm missing, but I can't think of it.
And then in 2026, we're throwing another million bucks at that thing.
That was the plan.
Where I'm going here is I'd like to get that, that, that whole process sped up. Before I die, I'd like to see more at Stevens Park. And if we go to 2027, Cloquet Park's got 250 grand on there for, for a brand-new structure.
Oh, that's a different fund. Yep, different fund. Yep.
Yep. But, but you, I don't, to me, I'd rather put the money in Stevens and, and not Cloquet. I mean, the, the building that we have there at Cloquet is, it'll certainly suffice for the next 10 years.
Yeah, staff talked about that. We said we could push to at least 2029, so we moved it out to 2029. Different funds though.
I don't mind spending the money. I want to speed up Stevens Park so that the residents got something they can use.
Sure.
Is my point. Uh, 2024 and 2025, we have two shelters for Rivers Ben Park and McNeil Park. I don't think either one of them have been built yet.
No.
So where's that money going to go then?
That money came from, that came, money came from CDAA.
Okay.
So those dollars have to be put toward the CDAA field for their, whatever it might be. So I know we did dugouts this year, batting cages or something that we talked about. It says, shows 24, probably actually won't be used. We probably should just push it out to 25 because those aren't going to get done this year.
I think the batting, the dugouts are going to be completed.
The dugouts will be, but.
Uh, the batting cages are going to be put, installed next year, I believe. We're waiting for some grant.
Yeah, that's separate from the shelters.
That's, yeah, that's why we're talking about shelters. River Ben, Rivers Benz Park is used by CDA and so is McNeil Park. So that's why shade and shelter are there. That, it's just a separate fund, but those dollars come from CDA raised based on rentals of the facilities.
Yeah.
And so those are used specifically for putting back into dollars used by CDA or items used by CDA. That's why they're in there.
And we've got 3.6 million in. And we've got three point six million in uh the water trail, but we're not doing that unless we get grant money, correct? Cause I don't, I don't want an idea where we're, we're going to go ahead and spend two million dollars and we're going to wait for somebody to reimburse that money. I mean, I, I will not support that.
We have got grant funding for the initial part of this um stuff for DNR and the LC Stevens part. I think the bigger part there was uh the Gooden Park area. I think that was where the the bigger number was for. Um, that would be working with Three Rivers Park District in there as well.
So the the phase one of the water trails construction is the first half, which will be, the end end spot will be at LC Stevens. That's the grant paid for by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of um federal dollars, a hundred thousand dollars of grant money from the National Park Service. So that's um eight hundred and fifty thousand and then the remaining um six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to come from the DNR related to the front half of that water trails, which is on, in the Stork Village related to the um.
The landing there.
Landing there to put that in. So that's where the one point six million comes from.
We don't have all that money yet.
We do.
We do, okay.
Well, we don't have it like technically as of today, we don't have it in the bank, but we're.
We're supposed to get it.
We have all of them earmarked and granted and good to go with. Yep.
Yeah.
So the second half though, the two million dollars is what we're trying to push for for Three Rivers Park District.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's why it's on the plan is because if we don't have it on the plan at all, Three Rivers Park District will not support it. Yeah, correct. They will not acknowledge it.
Uh, the four, the four ten fund, uh, police department, police department and public works signs and then this is all signs in the city and I I think this is absolutely asinine that we're, we're talking about eight hundred and ten thousand dollars in signs over the next five years. Well, I'm not sure what we're smoking here.
That's based on, that's based on the branding exercise you guys did.
It was a branding exercise tied in with the the signage um uh project that we completed that identifies all the signage throughout the city and what goes where. Um, there's a full map and inventory of what, you know, all the signs that we have designed and and the uses. Um, and the idea and the direction that we've had in the past is they want to phase this in. Uh, and so that's why it's in there the way it is. I mean, it was to give the city a a total branded look, so everybody knows they're in day and that type of thing. So it's to have a cohesive look throughout the city.
We, we had talked a little bit though about finding another option to, I think the the lowest price was, was it thirty K per sign or?
Yes, uh, well, yeah, for the biggest signs for the, you know.
Well, I thought that was the bottom. We had a range of costs.
But the, the, the whole signage um package is from just uh trail signs, you know, with an arrow and some, you know, information on there to the, you know, to the big illuminated sign that we have at the Parkway. Um, so, and there are various different signages that, you know, they're all a different level of uh cost and sophistication. So you can go from a straight wood sign to a uh a sign with limestone cladding and uh
Yeah.
ornamental gardening around it, landscaping around them. So there's a whole, whole range of things. So, I mean, I think that what we were looking at doing is getting some prices for those various different bigger signs. Um, so we can have a, an opportunity to understand what we're, we're getting for our money.
Yeah, I think, I think part of the problem I had last time, and maybe this Scott's alluding to this, but the sign in front of the activity center just kind of boggled my mind, the cost. And so we said no, because we didn't have a cheaper option. And that's, I think that's kind of the direction that, at least I'd like to see us go is that um, what we need cheaper options for some of these locations.
And we can get, you know, um, I need to reach out to a couple of sign, well, at least one sign company to get them to just spec some prices out of course. So we got some kind of an idea what the, the costs are going to be.
Okay, so this is just.
I don't, I don't know if we.
All these numbers are just a shot in the dark.
These are shot, well, yeah, there's a shot in the dark. Okay, we'll get as many signs done as this.
Absolute asinine to spend three quarters of a million bucks on a sign.
Uh, for sure. And I think it's very important that we have some sort of consistent branding as a city. Cause then you know where you're at and you know what you're following. Cause if you go down a path.
Put the swirl on all of them and then that'll be your consistency.
Sure, but you had the swirl on it that adds a thousand bucks or whatever it is. And um, I don't know if we want to have different, to me, the look of the sign is what knows that you have this as a city item by having a consistent sign.
Of the amount of calls we get complaining about the.
The dead tree over there on the.
But, but that's because we don't have an option right now.
Correct. That was basically.
Every time I see it, I think we could spend a very small amount of money and perfect that sign, but it's still a wood sign. Um, but the next option up is thirty K. Give us something.
Shock.
That isn't.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what we can do with, we're trying to follow that branding exercise that was done and
Yeah.
whether that maybe we just need to redo the whole branding exercise, just going to be a lot, that's a lot of dollars to put back into.
Toothpaste?
Stuff into what we've already done.
Well, and then, and then we've already started the process with the big sign at the Parkway as well. So we kind of invested in this project already.
Right, but at least with that one, you know, you replace the, 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 the sign phase.
Yep.
Um, and and it, if we want to look that direction, I'm fine. I can't tell you how many complaints I get about the toothpaste and I'm not kidding. People think it is butt ugly.
You didn't know it was toothpaste until I said it looked like toothpaste.
No, I pretty much looked at it first day. I'm like, yes.
So I think, I think what we need to do is as, as a staff and a council, I, no, I think it's a good question, but I want to make sure that we're all on the same page because
I agree.
obviously we're not on the same page. If you're talking about how much the science costs and we're like, well, that's what you approved, so and not by you guys, but as in the council before you approved it, and now we have to keep either keep moving forward and that means we're invested.
Yep.
You know, I don't want to get, and I, you know, this is that far out example of, I don't want to get to a size of Maple Grove or whatever, or Champlin, and we go, nope, we're going to redo the whole signs and now we have different sign. Once you kind of stick with the logo as you're growing, it's like that's your identity. Or you're changing everything, which is fine too. It's just, it's money.
It's work again.
Every time you do it.
It's work again, right?
You got it. So I'd rather, I'd rather get it right now and fix one big sign and all the rest of them follow versus.
Yeah, I, I think, and this is not the first time this has come up. The problem is it seems like we've got bigger fish to fry, but I really, I really would like to see us look at that.
Why don't you think we've brought back a sign this year? And that's the reason why is because.
No, I get it.
I believe we spent fifty six on the one on the interchange.
Something like that.
And right now we're looking at a forty thousand dollar sign for Public Works. That's twenty thousand too much. For sure.
And that, and that might well be the case. I mean, like I said, there's all different kinds of signs in the, in the handbook there that, you know, we can get prices on those and maybe one of those is more appropriate for that location.
Alright, I'm just about done here. Uh, and these are, these are mythical things if they actually even happen. In twenty twenty six, we're looking at a three and a half million dollar extent expense for a hundred and seventeenth East French Lake Road for some road work. I mean, that's, that's, that's only if the development, only if it happens.
Yep.
But it's still in there.
Still in there. Yep.
Uh, same deal on a hundred and thirteenth. That's only if them people agreed for the assessment.
Or the council moves forward the project. Yep, one of the two.
Yep. Uh, in twenty twenty six, I've got about a hundred, about two hundred K on some surveys. Uh, DO survey, Diamond Lake vegetation, deal, Grass Lake, Stormwater Model.
Yep.
That's just to keep Jason busy, right?
You got it, cause he's not busy. You've got it. I wish that was the case. No, those are all based on the watershed requests. And so watershed slash grants, we're going to pay for a majority of those.
As long as we get it, that's what I, yeah.
I can add on those briefly. So those are all projects that are identified in past studies that you've done and past surface water management plans that have been done by the city and in conjunction with the watershed. We put them on here because the first box on the grant applications is, is this identified on your long term plan.
Okay.
So we can check, yes, we have these projects on there. To be honest, if we don't acquire funding for them, we just keep pushing them out.
Right.
So we don't do them without funding. Um, that being said, a few of these, just to know, we do, we have secured funding for it, so we are planning on moving forward a few of these in a few years.
As long as we get the funding, that's fine. I have no issue with it. And the same, same on the twenty twenty six, we're already planning on a nine million dollar water, water tower and treatment facility for well one. That's only if we get the money, right?
That's all based on grants. Yep. We might, we might have to move forward. So the only one we would have to move forward with that we probably should look at sooner or later is the water tower. Just based on the fact there is no additional storage on there. So if one of the walls goes out or something, or if we have a fire in that area, knock on wood, we have no fire suppression besides a tank of it there. So we might have to look at that as uh, you know, a higher priority, but doesn't mean we're going to go out and spend that with what, two point three million? And we still have to identify a, a project or a spot for that thing, so.
And I'm really going out on a limb here.
Sure.
But this just, I just about split a gut when I seen this thing. An armored vehicle for twenty thirty four? Are we kidding?
I'm surprised you haven't, they didn't see that until now. It was added at the beginning of the year.
We put that on there just for laughs, right?
No, it's because we will need an armored vehicle probably in twenty thirty four. It has to be, it should be on the ten year plan. A chief can mention it, but almost every department that's larger than us has an armored vehicle, so.
Why?
Subject matter expert here.
Uh, Burnsville example, um.
That's a pretty big city, way, way bigger than here.
Um, anything like that, if you have access to one, um, it's for the safety of the officers is what it is. And by twenty thirty four, we're going to need one here. We're at twenty three worth for sure.
We'll see.
It's, it's mostly for hostage situations or those type of situations and for protection for the officers.
Well, I kind of chuckled. We got a wa- a, a water park for twenty thirty and then we got an armored vehicle for twenty thirty four. I just, whatever. I mean, it's a long ways out there.
Though, all your comments are all on different funds, so it's like, it's hard to, I don't know, it's hard to explain that all this money means this and this money means that in the same year because they're totally different funding sources or uses of money. Now, I know the council can move money and transfer money any which way possible, which is true. But the idea is to have each individual fund or business is what we like to call them. Each individual one should stay in that same thing. If you have three businesses that you own yourself personally, you're not going to switch money between all three of them or some different expenditures based on wherever which one has money. Cause the IRS is going to look at you and go, what the heck are you doing? Um, and we try our, do our best as a city. Now, we don't get the IRS on our butt to do that, but we really try to keep the funds in the right buckets and try to plan out a long term plan that's going to work. So the ones like I want to talk about are park dedication dollars, like the LC Stevens one. If you want to speed that up, fantastic. Staff's all for it, including myself. I'm all for that. We got to put more money in there than having park dedication dollars put in there by homes. Cause there's just not enough money to put in there for home, new homes. Each new home puts forty, five hundred bucks in there. Need a lot of new homes for a million dollars for the work. So that's, it's just, all those buckets and funds are just so siloed as, as, as we probably should or try to as best. It just costs, every single thing costs money and then you try to get, move money from here to here and then you end up being short in that other fund and then are moving money back.
No, I get it. I mean, I.
I get your, I get your question.
I would like to see a, and uh, whether or not Stevens is the right place for it, I'm not saying that. But in twenty twenty six, I'd like to see the playground and a water park if that's the spot for it. And those two items, I think they'll cost seven hundred and fifty grand. I mean, your four, four hundred and fifty is way off base, I think.
For?
For the water park.
Oh, for a water splash pad?
Yeah. Because uh.
I don't even know.
Saint Michael built theirs for two oh six, but that was about three years ago, four years ago. And I know for a fact they built it for two oh six.
I could talk to a single who just redid theirs and I can see how much they spent. I think they redid theirs last year or two years ago. They already had one previously. Yep, and then they redid it. And if just the redoing it costs two hundred and fifty thousand bucks, there's no way we're getting one for two fifty, brand new.
Well, then we better talk to Saint.
Well, I mean, you could also have no features in it too. You could just have a bunch of water sticking out of the ground too.
No fountain.
Possibility too.
Oh, Saint Michael's is a pretty nice water park.
They also did it at the perfect time, I would say. I don't think they got better timing.
Well, maybe they're smarter than we are.
I would. A lot of people smarter than me, Scott.
It'd take more luck than it was anyways, so.
Anyway, alright, I'm done. You guys go ahead and fire away.
I'm good.
You got Steph?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Oh, sure. I don't know because it's a ways out there. There's some, there's some things I think we ought to look at that are sort of uh contingent on our timing with the fire station three. And uh, and so since we moved that, I think we need to, to look at a couple of those other fire related things and see if our timing is right on those or if those need to shift along with the, along with the fire station.
Okay.
Let me see here. In Fund four oh five, on page ninety five of our packet, uh, Braeburn Trails uh Phase Two for the park is slated. I think that's too soon. Uh, we've got a million dollars in there for next year. And then um for those further phases, it just doesn't seem to me like that development is going to be far enough along for us to, to finalize that immediately. And it seems like most of these things we've been doing a planning year and then a implementation year. Uh, and there's no gap between the, the million and the two hundred thousand that we've got, so my suggestion would be to bump that out at least a year.
Council like to do that? We can do them, same with, year after year, it just would be, could be different contractors.
Yeah, I just don't know, you know, are we going to even own all the land yet? There's two sections of that that we.
We will own, we currently own two sections, which is phase one. Uh, we will likely own a third and possibly a fourth. So we would likely own, depending on how it happens with ECM farms, that would be the south east corner. We should have that one taken care of or move forward. But the other one, I'm not sure of when Sundance um golf course is going to get redeveloped. I believe they've already started that redevelopment process with the eleventh edition of Sundance Greens, which made the cul-de-sac um onto the golf course, but I don't know if he's doing the rest of it either.
Is, is, are these numbers consistent then with our seventy five, twenty five?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Well, it's, that's just my suggestion. It seems like that's coming too soon, since there's a couple of fuzzy pieces around that.
Like it jumps the gun a little bit, really.
That's, yeah, we can move it out. Like I said, I think the reason I kept it in there is because it was originally intended to be in twenty four and we're just trying to get that project done. But we can mostly move to twenty seven if that's what the council.
Just the, right, just the phase two piece of it.
I'm hearing uh no comments, so we'll move it. Okay.
Alright, another one that I have a question about is that every year we put fifty thousand dollars into, this is in, I'm sorry, um, Fund four oh eight, page ninety nine in our packet. Uh, we put fifty thousand dollars in for easement acquisition for West Mississippi Regional Trail. Three Rivers has shown us that they're just going to buy everything that comes up for sale along the river road. So I don't know why we need any money for easements. I mean, I think the original thinking was we would, if we wanted to get out ahead of them a bit on, on some of this, but they seem to be a, a bit ahead of us on it. And so I don't know. To me, it doesn't seem like we need to put any more money into that. We haven't spent any. We've been collecting it for several years. I don't know why we need to add to that when we're not really using it and they're, like I said, they're, they're the first buyer that seems to show up for anything that goes up for sale. So that's just a thought, is that we could eliminate that.
Council like to do that?
Yeah, I, I agree.
Yep. What else? What'd it be used for other than just a trail connection?
It's just gonna.
Literally the trail that we've been talking about on Dayton River Road for the longest time, right?
Yes.
Literally, yeah. I agree with Dave. They're just beating us to the punch every time. They're going to do it tomorrow morning, so.
It'll, it stops in twenty six for whatever reason. I don't know why.
Question, that's all.
We'll remove it.
Yeah, it just clutters it up and it's, it's not like we, we can move the money somewhere else. I mean.
I just don't feel like fifty thousand's going to cut it anyways. I mean, seeing what they're rolling forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, um, I was curious more than anything on that same fund, we've got money for a trail on North Diamond Lake Road and I'm not sure where, well, not entirely clear to me what that one accomplishes. Is it just a segment or are we connecting some things that make it, make something more usable?
So that is the, that, that trail part is the missing link between connecting River Hills Development, Cypress Cove and Ione Gardens to um Elm Creek Park.
So see a trail.
So, yeah, so Ione Gardens comes up to the, I think that's, I don't even know what the road is that crosses right there at North Diamond Lake Road where you're headed to Ione Gardens. Berkshire maybe? That sounds right.
Berkshire, yeah.
Berkshire, um, right there would be the connection point. There's a trail that goes to there, so you can go anywhere in that neighborhood. All the way over River Walk and M V Estates through the neighborhood. But you can't get from there to Pine View Meadows. There's a missing gap in the trail there. So if you were to walk, you'd have to walk along the road. There's no, we probably won't have anybody do that and you can't again. And then you'd have an on street trail on Vine Wood. There's, that's technically an on street trail because there's not a lot of traffic down that road and it's wide enough. We could make an auxiliary lane like we did in Deerwood.
Yep.
Essentially just paint a line and that costs next to nothing.
And that'll get them over to, through that neighborhood.
That gets you, yeah, that gets you into Pine View Meadows Development and then by Pine View Meadows, you take the trail that we just did along Pine View down to the concrete. So that's the missing segment.
Okay, so it connects those segments together.
We shifted the um Dayton River Road section that we're going to do with trail that had have been identified by the Parks Commission based on the county's plan to redo Dayton River Road in a few years. We shifted the, um, Dayton River Road section that we're gonna do with trail that had have been identified by the Parks Commission based on, um, the county's plan to redo Dayton River Road in a few years. So, we switched that and said we're not gonna move forward with that project. We'll switch it to North Diamond Lake Road. Um, we had planned on actually being at that corner, but after further review, it makes, um, about zero sense to make a pedestrian cross at that corner. Cause there's not a safe crossing, um, at the corner of North Diamond Lake when it actually goes into Vine Wood right there, cause it would just be a straight across and right onto North Diamond, or onto Vine Wood. It's a very dangerous corner there, so taking somebody cross right there makes no sense and likely not gonna get approved by the county, so. And we don't even know if it's gonna get approved to the county with a Berkshire crossing yet either.
Still the road, right?
We're still working on that, Jason. I, I think we emailed them last week or even, maybe even, it's been more than once, but that's basically the missing segment.
Did we figure out if we have the right of way on the south side?
We don't.
Oh, so that nine hundred is a complete swag.
Mm-hmm. We took the money essentially allocated for the trail on the Dayton River Road and just shifted it. I think it was the same amount of funding, roughly about a million dollars. The trail, the actual trail only has to be from Berkshire to Vine Wood, so it's not like it's that long, really.
It's not very far.
Yeah, it's not very far, but we have right of way to get, so. We have right of way on the north side, but then you can't get across the road, so makes not a whole lot of sense to put the trail down that.
Well, sure, you can get across the road.
About a third of a mile, looks like.
Correct. Yeah, as I said, it's not that far of a trail, so actually constructing the trail is it, and we don't need to make it to Three Rivers Park to strict standards, so it doesn't have to be.
Ten feet wide, you know, X, X, X.
We'd make it, what is it, eight feet wide for most, eight feet wide for most trails, so we can follow the flower.
As I say, just a pave.
Well, if you put the road on the south side, you're still gotta cross the road at some point.
Did you cross it?
It would be that intersection to save.
With the intersection, which is a perpendicular crossing that's further away from the intersection of Dayton River Road and.
Yeah, but that's, if you cross it right there at Vine Wood, you're crossing right on that curve. I mean, cars are only gonna, gonna be going twenty-five, thirty at down that corner.
I'll pass it off to Jason, cause he's the one who told me we shouldn't go there.
Well, we would still need to acquire right of way at least on one property, it looks like on the north side, but yeah, on the south side, that's one, two, three, four, maybe five properties, six, seven.
Which is why it's been a slowly processed.
So, that's another conversation.
Yeah, I don't see us spending that money next year or the year after.
Let's be positive about it. Say it's gonna go really well.
I would think realistically.
That's why it's been identified. Otherwise, there's not really a lot of trails that are being added, cause most of them are being added along Dayton River Road with the projects in twenty-eight and twenty-nine and thirty, whatever the county will do then.
Okay, um, I think that's actually all I had, Scott.
Really?
Covered some of what I had questions about and I think.
Let's go back into, I wanna, is anybody else having any comments? Otherwise, I wanna address Scott's comments that he had there.
The only other one I, the only other one I got, and I think that's just more conversation, is the five million dollars in Stevens for twenty-twenty-eight. I mean, we don't even know what we're planning there, so.
That'll be back from the master plan that we're due.
That's just another conversation at some point.
You got it. Yep, I agree.
Um, so we still don't have any idea about funding for the training facility, right?
Not at the moment.
And, right now, that's on the twenty-twenty-six. I, I guess I'm, I'm thinking that that should be almost moved out until we know we have funding or.
I would agree.
Um, we, we can always pull it in if we get funding, but I, I just.
Well, we don't even have a facility to put it at yet.
Well, that would be to pay for the facility, the funding would.
Or property, I should say.
So, by having it in twenty-six and the reason it wasn't twenty-five, we moved it to twenty-six is even if we have it in, there's no way it's gonna happen in twenty-five just based on.
Yeah.
There's a lot of answers why it's not.
Well.
Um, but the reason why we put it in twenty-six is to show it's still a priority for the city, so that we, cause we provide long-term plan to the, typically we go for bonding dollars, is what we have them doing with the state. Just cause it's, um, we've had pretty good success with it and our reps have been fairly good with us, so we've, um, we got the cash bonding last time and we were also close to getting a bonding bill the last session. So, wouldn't have been for the training facility, but it would have been for other things. Um, by having it in twenty-twenty-six, we at least show it's a priority. If you keep pushing it out, it doesn't show as much of it as a priority. Not saying you can't move it out, I'm just saying it's not as much of a priority to us, so we're not gonna get as priority funding for that item. I'd say we're gonna get it either way, I'm just noting it as a, it's an item of note. We can move it to wherever you'd like to, it just, I think it's still gonna be on there as a item of request from the fire department.
Okay, um.
Take that feedback what you will.
Item, uh, four oh one fund.
Do you wanna move it? Do you, I don't wanna.
Well.
When should we state it? I don't know.
You're not gonna, it's not gonna get built until you get funding anyways.
Nope, correct.
So, I mean, it's just another conversation.
That's the.
I think the whole idea is, is I would prefer you guys don't plan these and all of a sudden, three months from now, oh yeah, we're gonna plan this before we talk about it again and, and get funding, you know? Cause generally, if it's on here, it's happening.
We would.
Not always.
We would.
Look at the science, look at the science. We didn't buy any of them, I would have thought.
This is a, a bonding year for the state, so we would have some idea where we're at. In terms of getting funding, funding for this.
I'm not sold on the whole training idea yet, so, I mean, we haven't shown that little cash flow. We don't have, we don't have any support from any city.
I showed you a cash flow.
No.
I don't think you're gonna get any community that's gonna say, yeah, for sure, we're gonna use it, cause they don't know what they're gonna use, so.
Until you get that, I'm not gonna support it.
Okay, that's good.
Go after twenty-twenty.
But yes, we have, we will have multiple asks into the bonding bill, so what we'll have to do is, um, Seth put together all the bonding requests. I'll send them out to the senators and our house representatives, which is Hoffman and Nadeau. But I'll need probably some prioritization from the council if we do hear back from them about which ones do we wanna pick from, cause we likely won't get all of them.
Yep.
We'll submit for as much as possible, because why wouldn't we? Alright, we could reutilize our tax dollars and basically double dip of getting tax dollars from the state that we already submitted in as, as residents, but, yeah. But might have to have some prioritization conversation next year, depending on what the bonding bill is like.
I, I guess I'm, I'm kinda with Scott a little bit in that when we have something that we're planning, that we, we tend to provision for that plans, which might make sense, cause it's on the plan. And yet, we know this isn't happening without the funding. And that, that's my concern. So, I, I get what you're saying that, although I don't know, you know, whether Hoffman or Nadeau sees our long-term plan.
I do share with them, yep.
Do you? Okay. Um, I guess the only other thing I have is if we are, if we move that station out, where is this ladder truck and tender going? If we're getting it in twenty-twenty-eight and I'm, and I guess I'm asking if we should be pushing that out also.
Gary already made the comment that it'll fit in this bill.
It'll fit here.
I understand that, but do we have the room?
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, uh, we do have the room for that.
For both?
Yeah, the, yeah, cause we're, the one tender or the, our current tender that we have now is scheduled to be sold again. That's the temporary one over at, uh, Station One. So, we do have the, the room of that capacity.
So, we would take this engine and move it to Station One and then this, we would have the tender and the ladder truck here?
Yeah, currently we have a rescue and an engine in, inside this base here, so we just put the engine and the rescue in the other half bay and put the ladder truck in the single bay.
And the tender?
Uh, that would go at Station One and be swapped out with the tanker that's there. So, the tanker's gonna get sold, so that piece of equipment will leave and then the engine tender will be in that spot.
Okay.
Where does the aerial truck go?
That goes.
It goes in here.
So, yeah, so right now we have in that station, there's a tanker, an engine and a rescue.
Correct.
In that, in that base at Station One. Um, and so what we would do is we would take the tanker out of commission at Station One and sell it and then get the engine tender in, so those, still have three at Station One. In Station Two, we only have a rescue and an engine in the state, in the base, um, at all times. That's where they're at. And so, we would just reposition, put the rescue out the back of Station Two, engine out the front probably, and then aerial truck in the other bay. So, we have space for another one, cause we got rid of the, one, one piece of, we got rid of was the heavy rescue or the, uh, the big one with the big giant slides on it.
Utility truck.
Utility truck, yes, so. We got rid of that one in, earlier this year?
Six months ago, something like that. Earlier, yep.
Just no point in having a piece of equipment that's gonna take more maintenance.
Yeah, that's helpful. Um, but also, in twenty-thirty, we've got a, an engine for Station Three, but we're not building that until thirty-one.
So, that one we'll have to probably talk about, and that was more of a replacement for fire.
Replacement for Engine Twenty-One.
Engine Twenty-One.
Cause that'll be due for replacement in thirty, so I'm like, request for that, more than likely we come in twenty-twenty-six for that cost savings.
It, it does say.
So, it doesn't, it says for Station Three?
Yep.
But it should probably be replaced and say replace Engine Twenty-One, is what it should say, because Engine Twenty-One will be twenty years old at that point. By twenty-thirty. Who bought that one in two thousand and nine, ten?
No, two thousand.
And so.
That one, Twenty-One was already replaced.
No.
No.
Um, we replaced Engine Eleven. Um, Engine Twelve is our newer one that we got in twenty-seventeen or something like that.
I don't think I got all the numbers, but.
I know, yeah. There was two engines at Station One at one point. Now, there's currently only one. And we replaced it with that engine tender to combine two pieces of equipment into one piece of equipment for less maintenance.
Mayor, members of council, if I could ask a quick question, cause I was not here, I was on vacation. I'm just looking for some information as it relates to pushing Station Three out to twenty-thirty-one. I wasn't here to understand or kinda how the council came to that discussion or that decision.
I think it came in on the survey that, uh, the residents in the city that are fine with the fire protection that, that's here. I think that's mainly where that conversation came from.
Yeah, it was a combination of there's, they're satisfied with response times, they are, the amount of money they wanna put forward for a new station wasn't anywhere near what we'd need. So, um, so that's why the three years would get us to the next, uh, survey.
Or, or and then also in twenty, by twenty-twenty-nine and twenty-thirty, I think it is, there's a lot of TIF money coming in.
Depends on what you look at first.
Right.
But people have spent it, not spent it, depending on which one your version of the, of the plan is.
I understand, I, you, I understand how you guys think, but.
Well, it just, it just is, cause you can't spend it four ti- four times. It's, everybody's gonna be paid for with the TIF money.
That is correct.
It's not that much money that's gonna be coming in. I mean, it's a, it's a portion, so, um.
I think it's about a million bucks.
It was about.
A little under half of what we would need.
Pretty good change in my mind.
It was about half what we would need if we had it all up.
No, I know, yeah. Twenty-twenty-eight's a bad year.
Well, yeah, I guess that would be another reason.
So, basically the reason was just to push it out until we hear the next survey. Does, so the next survey comes out.
Yeah, resident.
Yeah, and I think the conversation, have it back and forth, and that's fine, whatever year you pick is, it could ebb and flow, so I'm not too concerned about the year, but, you know, as long as it stays in the long-term plan is, is important for city, stability and city operations overall. There are lots of changes and things happening.
And we had, uh, some money in the budget to start putting away for these, for the ladder truck, and it sounds like that might go away, but we haven't had that discussion yet.
Do we have the next council meeting?
So, we may have to bond for that guy.
That would, no.
No?
No.
No, there was a conversation a while back that you were gonna, you were gonna bank all kinds of money coming up.
Yep, I'll share the long, I should share that with tonight, but I didn't have it ready to go, so.
Okay.
So, basically, yeah, part of the long-term plan is planning out the rest, you know, kinda the future years as best I possibly can. I'm not a wizard, nor am I perfect at forecasting.
Well, and clearly the county isn't either.
Um, but the idea would be to try to keep the tax rate within reason, and when I say within reason, it would go up or down half to a full percent, somewhere in there over the next few years, based on operations changes and future growth of what we see in the city, um, to be able to fund that ladder truck in three years' time. That would mean that the council would have to be okay with keeping the tax rate the same as where it is today. What that means is that the taxes wouldn't go up unless your house value goes up, that's what the tax rate change means. If your household value goes up, there's nothing we can do here. City, we can do what we want, but that would be what would happen. If you weren't to do that, then the tax rate would go down and decrease, which people would pay less taxes, but then you're gonna have to bond for, which then people are gonna pay higher taxes for that bond or pay for that piece of equipment. If that makes sense.
No.
Okay.
Anyway, it's another conversation.
Sure.
I know there was a different conversation about six months ago about where all that ladder money was coming from.
For me?
We'll get there. I wanted to save six hundred a year for that ladder truck.
Oh, when it.
We had a great big different idea that.
It went into operations to.
Yeah.
Finalize up operations, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
I'm done.
Easy come, easy go.
Anybody else have any more?
No, no, I think I got everything that I had.
Okay.
Do we wanna make any changes to the long-term plan based on comments that, I know we made a couple that David made, which is fantastic and appreciated. I know Scott made a few of them. Do we wanna put more money into parks to be able to do LC Stevens quicker?
First, you gotta figure, you gotta figure out what you want, what you, what you're gonna build.
Yep.
I don't want just a number, I don't want just a number there, because.
Didn't we task the, kinda, at the last, well, at the last meeting, we talked about what our vision was for to that, you know, obviously that relayed back to parks, so I'd imagine they're on it, so we should have some.
Yeah, there'll be a master plan RFP that went out already, right? Okay, okay. We'll get it pulled together.
More to come.
Yep, more to come on that. We could have a master plan discussion about what you guys wanna see there at LC Stevens long-term.
I did have another question about the tender has a comment next to it saying it's already funded.
Yep.
I thought that was just a small portion of that. How much, how much is funded?
Um, all of it'll be funded by that point. The only part that's missing right now is that four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that says replace Tanker Eleven. And that says this will fund Engine Tender below, and that's in twenty-twenty-six. So, the only part that's missing is that four seventy-five.
So, where, where is the rest of the funding coming from?
So, it came from the sale of Engine Eleven, which was four hundred thousand dollars. Wish I had my computer on me.
That gets you most of the way.
Yeah, that gets you most of the way, but I have notes on the side of this thing that you can't see on the printout. There's four, yeah, so four hundred thousand dollars for Engine Eleven, there's four seventy-five funded in twenty-twenty-six, that's eight seventy-five. We have a hundred thousand dollars coming from, it's from, let me speak here. A hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the sale of Utility Twenty-One, so that was the other truck we sold out of here that was a hundred and twenty grand. And then we have fifty thousand dollars of extra tax levy dollars coming in twenty-five that's planned currently in the budget. And then twenty-twenty-six, we have the remaining difference, which is a hundred and fourteen thousand bucks. That's where the dollars come from.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I was having a little trouble making that jump from four seventy-five.
Three of them basically are, yeah, sales, actually sale of Engine Eleven came to four twenty-seven, five hundred, that's what we actually got. And then sale of Utility Twenty-One is a hundred and twenty grand. Two previous pieces of equipment, one budgeted tanker replacement and then two hundred, it's a total of a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars of tax levy paid for the rest.
Anybody got anything else?
Good questions, good comments? Any, any, any change we wanna make to the long-term plan? So, I wanna make sure this is pretty much finalized. Um, at the next council meeting, I can bring up the kind of, uh, we won't say it's a long-term plan, but kind of the forecast of what the tax rate would be over the next few years, based on all the changes that we're seeing in this long-term plan that are based on funding, so. Bring that to the next council meeting along with discussions with, um, the final budget discussions for next year's twenty-twenty-five budget.
To me, you, to me, you really gotta figure out, when you say, uh, what the tax rate is gonna be, you can't say, estimate that for twenty-twenty-eight, because the five million you have for LC Stevens, you don't even know if you're gonna spend it, so you can't put it into a budget.
I'd put it in there as a bond. So, I did, I did factor it in, but doesn't mean it's, the fi- the five million is just an arbitrary number.
Right, right.
It could be nothing and then it changes, yeah, it changes all the tax levy number.
Yeah.
Based on we have the long-term plan, I've put together a forecasted items for not just long-term plan stuff, but also operations and changes with operations based on, you know, guaranteed increases and, you know, when I say guaranteed, it's gonna be salary and benefit stuff, it's insurance. It's everything that goes up every year for you guys. It goes up for the same, gas, utilities, all the stuff goes up. It's just basically generated into the formula, so I'm happy to share that too. At the next council meeting, I was gonna share tonight, but I obviously included some.
Hey, are we good?
I'm good.
Yes.
Item.
I like when you beat me up with a long-term plan, so thanks so much.
Item, EDA by law amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in, I think it was November of last year, the council amended, uh, a section of the city code, uh, requiring that, uh, I think if commissioner members miss more than three or have more than three absences, they would be.
than three, or have more than three absences, they would be removed from the commission. Recently, the EDA has amended or has approved to amend the bylaws to make it more discretionary, whether it's a, an excused or an unexcused absence. So this does leave some discretion to the chair or the EDA president to determine if a person who is absent or a member that is absent has an excused or unexcused absence, which is different than what the councils or the city code is. So this is a long way of saying, the EDA is requesting an amendment to the bylaws, which the city council needs to approve in order to go into effect. From staff's perspective, if the council is supportive of this amendment, then it should be applicable to all commissions. So once again, the city code requirements is if you miss more than three meetings in a calendar year, you're off that commission. What the EDA is requesting is some latitude as far as, as interpreting if a commission member, EDA member is, has an excuse or an unexcused, unexcused, still can't pronounce it right.
I think we got it.
I got the ideas.
I guess I'm, I'm okay with the specific instance, only because we changed the rules not long ago, but I, to me, if somebody can't meet twenty-five percent of the time.
And in the staff report, I, part of that language is incorrect. So in the staff report mentions of, if you, you have to attend seventy-five percent, so it's, or miss twenty-five percent, it's three, is the magic number. So if you miss more than three meetings, then you're automatically off the commission.
A moved meeting or canceled meeting does not count against you.
Correct.
But make sure that that, that's clear.
That's outside of their control.
That's outside, that's correct.
Yeah, I think the intent of it broadly was that if you're gonna miss a third of the meetings, which essentially what this is, then what level of commitment do you really have to that commission or authority? And for me, I guess I'll, I'll just say I'm not in favor of approving this change. I think it should apply to all the commissions.
Yeah, I'm not.
I agree. What, sorry, are you done?
Yeah.
I just, I don't know the difference between, I know what it is fundamentally, but I don't know what we consider that as excused or unexcused, if it's just at the discretion of, of the president, so that's just casting judgment. There's nothing concrete there for me, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't approve of this.
My only comment would be, and I agree with what you guys are saying, there's twelve meetings a year on all of these commissions. To me, if you can't make nine of them, then you probably shouldn't be there.
Right.
Now, and, and I find it utterly almost impossible that four of them meetings would be a death in the family, or, I mean, I don't see a anniversary or anything like that. If it falls on that meeting day.
Yeah.
It's not that big a deal, in my line.
I can see some significant life events really.
Something big.
Taking somebody out, where, where, I don't, as it's written today, I, I don't see it, I think it deserves a deeper discussion on what we accept as unexcused and excused, and then leave up absences of that, is what it entails, is something more major like that, like, that's covering all bases, so.
I wanna make sure it's clear. I believe the ordinance isn't automatically removed either. I think it's, will be.
Recommended.
Brought, recommended to the council for removal. Doesn't mean that they will be removed.
Correct.
It means that they will be recommended to council for removal.
And if there are extenuating circumstances, that makes sense, and we can take that into account.
That's why, and that's why it was written that way, was not, I believe, not just automatically removed.
Well, the intention is that if it, I'm gonna look at the ordinance again, but in watching the, the council meeting from last year, the intention was is to remove the subjectability from the council, so that.
It was automatic removal.
Oh, what?
It was automatic.
It was talked about next time.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm still okay with it.
And taking the judgment off the chair versus you.
Sure.
I think the whole thing came from an EDA member missed four meetings, correct?
Three.
Three? Was that three?
Three.
And his next.
Yeah, I think you guys added during that meeting to make sure that staff sent out a reminder email before someone was.
And that did not happen. Not so far it happened.
And again, like I said, we kinda changed rules halfway through the year, but now the rules are in place.
Kind of built process rigor, too, something a little more.
Yeah. I, I think, like Dave said, if you're missing, or Scott, somebody, if you're missing that many meetings, you need to get somebody on there that can hit the meetings.
Motion in a second to deny it?
A motion to deny, the language I've seen.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've hit this before, a motion to.
Well, I guess you don't have to, you don't have to do anything if you don't want to, I guess.
Right. We, I would just say we, we're not moving forward with that, yeah.
So no motion, right?
Yeah, there's no motion.
I withdraw my second.
This one always gets me.
Yeah, that's why.
It happened last time, too.
I like the denial, I don't know, just clean, but.
I understand. It's just a motion to do nothing seems.
Yep, perfect. Move on. Here we go.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item N. Good evening, Mayor and Council. What I'm looking for tonight is approval to award the bridge contract for the North Bridge at Elsie Stevens Park. The item has been approved to go out for bid. We have had the bid opening, and we do have a low bidder. I would like to just discuss the handout that I put on your desk before the meeting. This was to, in response to a question from the mayor. I did a little bit of research on this to find out exactly why the box, the box culvert wouldn't work in this area. And it's basically because of the location of that box, that bridge, it's in the floodway, which is a little different to the flood plain. So the floodway should not have obstructions installed that would restrict the free flow of floodwater. In this case, it would be predominantly water from the river being pushed back down the creek when it's at flood stage. This whole area is actually in that floodway. We did consult with, Paul did consult with various professionals, engineers, the bridge engineers, and a civil engineer to figure out what would be the best use of a bridge in that area. And it was unanimous that we should go for a, a structure that doesn't impede the water flow there.
Okay, a motion in a second.
I had a couple of questions. Not that particular one, although I did wonder about that as well.
Okay.
So thank you for that clarification. There's some pretty wide swings in the.
Yeah.
In the bidding on some of the items that, you know, caused me a little bit of concern. Structural concrete goes from thirty-two thousand with the low bidder that we're discussing to a hundred and twenty-three thousand to the high bidder.
Anything concrete, it'd be pretty concrete.
Bracing deck, forty-four, low bidder, eighty-five, high bidder. And that, it also appears that this contractor, VEDA, subcontracts all of that work. And so I'm, yeah, a little concerned about, you know, their expertise in giving us an accurate bid.
And that's why we reached out to them, and that's why they sent back, you know, they, there's a letter in the packet from them.
Suck that, yeah.
State in which the projects they worked out. Paul did reach out to Otsego about the, the projects there, and they had nothing but good things to say about the contractor, that they did the work at the price and on time. So I think we did our due diligence there. We did query them about their prices on those specific things, and they are definitely comfortable with the prices they put in their bid documentation.
Okay, it just, it jumped out at me because there's such a big, big difference here.
And what, what are risks for a change order? I mean, what, what kind of categories? So we already did soils, right?
Soils are done.
Yeah.
But that was all in the bid package as well, so.
Right.
We kinda covered a lot of that off in the bid packet, package. It was fairly comprehensive, what we're expecting, and what they were bidding on was, was detailed.
All right. I think of all the projects we have, this one's probably the pretty low risk, and the reason for is we always get back soil corrections.
Yeah.
We've already done those soil borings, so we can say, we gave you those, you knew exactly what you were doing, and not, well, we didn't do those, well, now we, you know. Although, poor soils is a very common response back. We've done that research for them, so they know exactly what's there.
Good.
Which isn't a valid excuse then for poor soils.
Well, if it goes south, A A Ron is gonna have a word with us. Hey, Al's?
I'm good. I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right. I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the opposed say no. Motion carries forward to zero. And unless there are objections, we will be adjourned. We're adjourned.